Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 20th, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in the council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm presiding, also President or Council President Deb Rule, Councillors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility as the Presiding Officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant of Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn in the back of the room. If everyone please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements and reports. Do council members have any announcements or reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council.
We had a Parks and Rec Commission meeting this last week and was not able to make it, so next week I will have a detailed update for everybody, so.
Thank you.
It went well.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Rule.
I do have notes from the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee. The Thursday, November 14th meeting in the council chambers, the roll call present Kate Hustman, Molly O'Reilly, Erin Billings, Julie Perchinsky, Reed Weber, Jennifer Heller, absent were Evan Lewis, Taylor Pryther, Radley Peterson. I was also out of town, so could not make the meeting. Deputy Clerk Haley Keys Clerk, City Clerk Melissa Ward was also present. Brandon Staglin introduced himself to the team as the new staff liaison and gave an overview of his experience in the area and his role as civil engineer for the city of Sandpoint. The minutes from the committee's October 10th, 2024 meeting were approved as presented. Mr. Staglin presented an overview of the duties of the committee is outlined in City Code Title II, Chapter Six, Section Four, sharing, for instance, how the committee's involvement and recommendations could be taken into consideration relative to the city's multimodal transportation master plan and its upcoming updates and clarifying how and to what degree the committee would be involved with the city's building, planning, application review processes. The committee was encouraged to study current conditions and the effectiveness of pedestrian walkways, multi-use paths, and bike lane locations throughout the city, possibly collaborating with the city's ADA Advisory Committee and suggest improvements or share ideas and/or policy changes that may resolve issues and improve conditions. Ms. O'Reilly reported on behalf of the Cedar Street Subcommittee. Notes will be provided to the full committee via email following the meeting. New business, the committee discussed possible subcommittees with consideration of the development of generic or standing subcommittees to cover broader themes of concern to help with productivity time. Requested action items for the next meeting, formation of subcommittees for intersection designs, development plans checklist, multimodal transportation master plan, and event planning. Committee roundtable, Mr. Staglin shared that he plans to include an item on the next meeting agenda to discuss how and under what circumstances the city's capital projects will be brought to the committee for a review or input. He also explained the timing as to how and when a building land use application becomes public record. The committee discussed the city's current methods of communication with the public on developments and projects, with a decision to include a topic on next month's agenda to discuss how the committee might make recommendations on publicizing city project open houses and other such events. A topic will be included on the next meeting's agenda for information to be provided by staff on possible funding for pedestrian bicycle-focused study analysis to inform city policy and actions as set forth in the committee's duties and responsibilities. The meeting was adjourned at 12:45 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, President Rule. Sounds like a very, very active and eager committee, so I'm glad to hear all of that great action. That's awesome.
You are welcome.
Other council announcements and reports.
Mr. Mayor, really quickly, with the help of yourself and the spot bus, I will be representing the city of Sandpoint on the spot bus board, and I will be going to our first meeting tomorrow as well, so I'm excited to report back.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Really appreciate you throwing your hat in the ring there, and you know, this is a follow-up to, we haven't, I don't even know how long it's been since an actual city council member or staff member's been representing us on that joint powers agreement, so thank you for taking the reins to that. Look forward to hearing what you learn.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a reminder to the public, no parking on the odd side of the street. Signs are going up. We are close to December 1st and the snow is flying, so really appreciate the public's support and following up and following those rules. Really makes snow plowing tremendously more efficient for our street crews, and thanks to the street crews for the leaf pickup. They're still out there hitting a few last piles just in time for the snow, so thanks for everyone's coordination, cooperation on that. With that, I'll now yield the floor to staff for some quick reports or updates. Let's, we can go left to right, Chief. Let's go down the line.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Quick update, it's snowing. If you guys didn't come from outside, I know there's some sarcasm in that, but we tend to forget that, and then we get in our vehicles and we drive like it's still the middle of summer. The odd side of the street, no parking, doesn't mean you get to park on the other side the entire time. If, just as a reminder for not, really if the public's listening, if your vehicle's been plowed around and you're parked on the appropriate side, please move that vehicle so that the snowplows can clean it up. Well, our Facebook page, we'll be putting about a bunch of stuff in the next couple of weeks, just to kind of remind the public. Something fun this week that the Police Department did is we did like an in-service training for a group of young women. We got invited to a church organization to teach them self-defense. One of the things that we've done historically, we've done a women's self-defense class, more addressed towards adult females. And we had a youth group call us up this week and wanted to do some hands-on, learn some do and don'ts and how to defend themselves as they prepare to go off to college, so we had to spend an hour and a half with a group of about 20 young women. And I would encourage anybody that if they have any youth groups or if they have any excitement to learn some of those basic, basic, basic things, give us a call, reach out to us. We'll set up a time where we can come in and meet with them and do some small groups. It was fun. It was educational for the young women and for their parents to learn about some of the dangers, but at the same time, some really simple techniques in how they can defend themselves. Calls for service are about same. Looking back at the last four months, we're trending about the same. We normally do 160 to about 600 calls a month for service, which is, for us, that's defined as any time someone calls in and we create a case or an officer makes a proactive stop, and we create a case in what we call spillmen, so we're right on trend with that. And I'll stop there. If you guys have any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Did you advertise that self-defense?
You know, that one didn't. They just called me up and wanted to know if that was something we did. So it's probably something now looking at it is to try to put it out there for other organizations to give us a call. We have advertised for the women's self-defense class before, and so we try to do a couple of those a year. This is the first time we've really done one for the teenagers.
So do you advertise the adult one?
We have, yep.
Okay.
Yeah. When was the last one we did?
Where would you advertise?
Oh, last time we advertised, we had on our Facebook page, the city page. I think it went out in the B, so last, but it's been a year since we've probably done one, so it's probably time now that hopefully stuff is starting to slow down a little bit that we can get another class in.
I took one a long time ago, and I told people about it, and I have friends that would like to do such a thing.
It's a fantastic class. For that one, it's usually two days to do it, but yeah.
Awesome.
Questions for the Chief? Thanks, Chief. Chief, Fire Chief Gavin.
Good evening, everybody. Let's see. We have, I don't know, we're kind of, the snow's flying, right? So we were basically into that mode where we've passed out the Halloween candy. We're getting ready for turkey, my absolute favorite day of the year. And then, you know, we're gonna, Fire Department, we're gonna support the, you know, bring it Santa down, getting the tree lighting done, and then it's off to Christmas and the new year, so. I just want to just kind of remind everybody to stay safe. If you have a hydrant anywhere near your house, please try to clear it out. It just helps us in a case of emergency. Other than that, everything's just kind of running hot, straight, and normal. Counselor Duquette, you had sent me that email. Did I answer your question about that and the codes?
Did I not respond?
I think, I don't, I don't know how many emails a day, but I just wanted to make sure that I answered your question thoroughly, so that's pretty much all we got, Mayor, as far as the Fire Department goes. I know everybody's kind of seen in the news and posts and stuff about Bonner County EMS. I know they're going through some stuff right now. I've talked to them. I don't, I don't see any, really any interruption in service or anything like that. I'm not worried about it. I think we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be fine, so if you have any questions or anything like that, just let me know.
Chief, with cold weather coming and space heaters and things like that, do we, do we have best practices for folks that we can help educate them on, you know, distance or carbon monoxide or stuff like that?
Yeah, it's, well, yeah, space heaters, you don't want to use any of the ones that emit carbon dioxide indoors, obviously. That's more like your garages and shops and stuff like that. Inside, try to stick with the electric ones if you can. Make sure you maintain at least four to five feet right around that area from any loose stuff like curtains, bedding, things like that, so. We haven't really run into anything yet, so we're hopeful that we won't.
Is there, let me just ask, if you come upon anything that's like best practices for space heaters, just love to get some information out to the public on our website or something.
Yep, absolutely. We can forward it over, get it on the website, put it on our Facebook page, all that good stuff.
I know a lot of people use those, so. Council, have any questions for the Fire Chief? You're bringing Santa, is that correct, on Friday?
Maybe not personally, but yeah, we're absolutely, yeah, we already got the phone call.
Okay.
Santa called from North Pole. He's very, very excited.
Cool.
Free-lit.
Good deal. And that's Friday at 5:30 to 6:00.
5:30, 6 o'clock, something like that, yeah.
All right.
All right, great.
Thank you. Cheryl, Central Services Director.
So just an update in Central Services. It's gonna be pretty quick. We're really busy just supporting all the departments. That's what Central Services does, so a lot of their reports is what we're working on with them. We did get the, you probably saw the email, we got the employee Intranet out there and released, so it's a great resource for the employees. We also, the open enrollment closes on Friday, so that is an important deadline. If you have any questions, then the employees just contact HR. IT's been really busy just helping with the Jamesy Russell Center on the technology side and getting that finished up and ready to go. And also this GATA project is, you know, it will swing and it's been a lot of work, but it's gonna be great when that's done. It's gonna be great protection for the plants. And that's, that's really it. Grants, contracts, procurement, really busy. We're gonna be bringing forward a procurement policy update in the next couple of meetings for consideration. And that's, Clerk is always busy, and yeah, is there any questions that you might have for the department?
Any questions for Cheryl? Thanks, Cheryl. Keep up the great work. Make it boring. Sarah from Finance. Nothing? Any questions for Sarah, Finance? Director Welker, Community Planning Development.
Good evening, Council. All I have for you tonight is I want to recognize some volunteers who came out on Saturday and gave up their Saturday mornings and joined myself and Maeve at the park where we embarked on some frantic planting of trees and shrubs in preparation for the coming snow. We planted over 100 shrubs and three full-grown trees. I wish we could have gotten more trees in the ground, but digging in cold ground with hand shovels is not the most efficient way, so we left the remainder of the 88 trees to be planted by the landscaping firm with their mini excavator this week. So the volunteers who came out on Saturday with this call to volunteers include Amy Malkemis, John Gaddis, Kent Anderson, Kent Stadham, Patty Onam-Downa, Dan Farman, and myself and Maeve. I want to recognize Dan Farman. I've known Dan and his family for a while, but I just learned a fact last week in our preparation for opening of the Sports Center about the Farman family, and of course, everybody knows the Farman name, and we all know the stories of Ella Mae Farman, the founding mother of Sandpoint. But one story that I only recently learned was that Ella Mae was the first treasurer and secretary of the Sandpoint Tennis Association, formed in 1923. So these people are all, a lot of these people are STA members today, and Dan himself didn't realize that his grandmother had been a founding member of the Sandpoint Tennis Association 100 years ago, so he really enjoyed hearing that story as we dug in the cold soil, side by side, planting our new urban forest. Of course, you know that we've got some upcoming important dates. A week from tomorrow is the public open house where we're gonna have the turkey trot and welcome the community to the Sports Center. The building will be done. The certificate of occupancy will have been issued. The weather today is obviously throwing a wrench in the landscaping and the completion of the playground, so the playground is still a work in progress, and we are kind of depending on some warmer, less slushy weather in order to finish installation of the play features, but we're assured that the surfacing is gonna go in, and the contractors still say the splash pad is gonna get poured this fall, so we're hopeful that that playground will be done in the weeks that follow the opening of the Sports Center. We do have to do a polishing of the concrete floors following Thursday's open house, so we will be delaying opening for play by approximately one week while the floor polishers come in. That has to be the absolute last thing that gets done. Everything else has to be done before the floors are polished, so we are gonna do a final stone grind and polish and seal of those cement, or sorry, concrete floors in the entryway lobby and in the community room. So we are looking at around a December 9th opening for play, but we are excited to welcome all of you next week to the open house and the turkey trot. I think the mayor's gonna be there.
I will be trotting.
Evans Brothers donated 160 servings of hot cocoa for the kids and four big pitchers of coffee for the adults as well, so we're really thankful for all our partners on this project, and those volunteers especially. They came out for over three hours on Saturday and worked in the cold.
And it benefits the food bank, so.
Oh, yeah, and that's a fundraiser for the food bank on Thursday as well, so we're bringing in donations. That's your entry fee for the annual turkey trot. One more announcement, our Rec Division has been developing, obviously, all sorts of ways to use the Sports Center. I think there's a huge misconception that this is a tennis and pickleball facility exclusively. Our first youth-oriented event is scheduled for December 13th. We've got a movie night. We've got the rights to show Home Alone. We're gonna have tarps out on Court Number One, put up a 52-foot indoor movie screen and have our free movie night for the community replicating what we did at Pine Street Park a few months ago, which had over 300 community members come out for Sandlot just across the street here on the baseball field. So we're doing a Christmas theme for the next movie night. There's gonna be cookie decorating in the community room, starting at, I think, 5:30 or 6:00, followed by movie at 7:00, so that's a free event. Bring your kids, bring your grandkids. We want to have a packed house, and there's gonna be a lot more of that coming in the near future, so thank you. Questions?
Any questions for Director Welker?
Yes, if I may.
Go ahead.
Just the time of the turkey trot for the public?
Oh, it's 9:00 AM.
Thank you very much.
Registration, 9:00 AM. I think it's not like a start-finish type thing. You can just show up, register, drop off your food donation, run. It's exactly one mile around the perimeter, so we're kind of billing it as, by the way, I need to recognize, this is really a YMCA event that the city's always been a partner in, so it's, I want to acknowledge the Lighthouse YMCA. It's a one, two, or three-mile run, basically.
So there's not a start?
There won't be a start, and it's not a race. It's a fun run.
Okay, yeah, so.
Oh, it's a race for the cross.
Cross country kid, you're gonna be racing.
You've got a child on the cross country.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you, Jason, and I think we all need to say thank you to the staff and to yourself as well. It's been a pretty amazing year. Comp plan is done. You're coming across the finish line on the Travers Playground, James Russell Center, got the citizen advisory commissions and committees in, and we got the hiring of a new planner amongst several other people, right? It's been about a little over a year ago that council had directed staff to put together a series of workshops and public engagement on downtown building design guidelines, historic preservation guidelines, urban streetscape designs, building massing height density, downtown historic district overlay, and a number of other things. And at the time, we were working with a, I think, Mayor, you had renegotiated a contract with GGLO at the time, or?
I terminated a contract.
Terminated it. Do we have the horsepower to move forward on this in the new year and get back to the public on some of this stuff that is near and dear to their hearts?
I'll comment, then I'll let the mayor comment real quick. Since I started, we had Darren Fluke, who you've all, you know, he's presented to council before as our contract planner after the departure of Amy in February. Darren was our contract planner until Bill arrived in mid-July. Bill started late July, and then we had Radica, who we loved, but she had to return to India for family health issues. And since then, Katie Keeney is our new assistant planner, has filled Radica's shoes as of about four or five weeks ago now, so we're still rebuilding our planning team, but the backlog, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, there was a backlog of current planning work that needed to be caught up on, current planning being the daily permits that we're processing in the department. So Katie and Bill are doing an outstanding job along with our building department with catching up with that backlog of building permits, and trust me, the mayor weekly is reminding us that the long-range planning efforts of the historic overlay district, the downtown design standards, these are things that are on the near horizon, but we are still kind of playing catch-up with the current planning work, the day-to-day process, processing of permits, communicating with developers and homeowners for their building projects and this various projects going on around town, so yes, I think Jeremy would probably like to comment on that as well.
Yeah, I'll just follow up. Thanks, Jason and Councilman Dick. Yeah, critically important, you know, absolutely hasn't fallen off the radar. The reality is, you know, not just this year, but for many years, we've been understaffed in the planning department, and because of the litigious nature and requirements of actual current planning, which means current building permits, current site plan reviews, PUDs, CUPs, things like that, the resources we have, we have to dedicate to things that we have dropped deadlines on, like we have to respond. So, you know, typically, it's a seasonal, you know, ramp up, you know, early spring through late fall. Current planning is just bonzo, just people, everyone is working every day on tons of projects. Typically drops off in the winter. We've been talking about, okay, this is your time now to take a breath and start work on that long-range planning, the zoning, the standards. So it is the intent to start working on that. Right now, it's actually well-aligned. Bill's been here, our senior planner, long enough now that he has our code, like verbatim in his head, which is awesome, because, and he's run up to a lot of the challenges that we face and sort of the problems and the sticky wickets in the code, so he's gonna be just well-versed and educated to start on this land use zoning revisions. We've lost some planning commission members turned out, termed out, so we're gonna have some changeover on the planning commission, starting next meeting, appointing a member, still looking for one or two others. So January, first meeting in January, we're gonna have a new planning commission with your, you know, approval of those appointments, and it's gonna be just a great time to start off on that, and I'll just put a bow on it by saying in the budget next year, there's never enough money for all of our priorities, but having served as the planning director before, it's really, it's really critical that we have enough current planning resources so that the planning director can work on the long-range planning, so I'll be looking for that in the next year's budget, is how can we support current planning further so Bill can really take the reins on the long-range planning, but we are getting to it, historic downtown, that's the priority to start down there. We're working on it as soon as we can.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Other questions for Jason? Thanks, Jason. Anyone else? Brandon, probably? No, we're good, okay. All right, so I guess as the Acting Public Works Director, I'll give it just a brief, super brief update on Public Works. We've got some lift stations going in down by the Edgewater Hotel and by the Conoco, some big lift station upgrades that are gonna be working through the winter. You'll see some activity down by the RV area and the Conoco. Beyond that, our street crew is prepared for winter. We recall the snow blower blew up last year, the two-stage, and they got the new engine in it. We didn't have to buy a new one. They got that all buttoned up and tested, so they are ready to go for the snow, and got all of our salt in the house, ready to put it down where it needs to be put down when the time comes. So streets and water, sewer, Public Works collections are all running well. People are feeling comfortable and ready for the winter. So with that, go ahead.
You just reminded me with the work down by the waterfront, I was walking along the Bay Trail recently, and I noticed that perhaps the city of Ponderay is starting their work on the site out there, and with the wet weather, the just normal pickup truck that was driving along the Bay Trail was leaving some pretty deep ruts. So I don't know if that's something that's in our agreement with them, that they're going to repair any damage to that tread, because I can imagine that dump truck, a fully loaded dump truck, is gonna make short work of that.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention, Councilman Schreiber. I will have someone follow up with Steve Gill, Idaho DQ, and Mayor Geiger in Ponderay, just to make sure that that's brought to their attention and that we have a fix for that, because we certainly don't want them to destroy the Bay Trail.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just make a note here. Anything else? Any other questions from the council at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
That reminded me of, so the, where the Army-Navy was. What's, he's building somewhere else, I hear. He's opening a business out. He's doing his business out in Ponderay, I was told. Do we know what's going on with that big?
It's private property. It's vacant. I don't think we have any building permits or current development activity on it, so it looks like Brandon's coming up. He might have some information on it.
Hello, I think it's appropriate that I mentioned this. Brandon Staglin, city engineer. That Army-Navy site, I talked to the actual owner. They told me verbally that they plan on filling in the hole there with dirt at some point very soon, which will allow us to not have to keep it gated off for pedestrian safety. I wanted to keep that fence up there just in case somebody was walking on that sidewalk and they fell a hole, so that's where we're at.
That's all we know, okay.
No, we don't know what's gonna get built there or if anything ever will, but at least they're gonna bring fill into the site. Thanks.
And that, since we're talking about downtown, I'll just bring up a couple, three other projects that I've mentioned that you're probably aware of, but I'll just keep you in loop. The city parking lot, we're working on a redesign of that that would allow it to be resurfaced. That's funded primarily out of the Urban Renewal District. We had a first design, and we're looking at just some tweaks to it, to probably have that entrance come off of Third Avenue rather than the north and south entrances now to reduce conflicts. We expect that to be working through design. We might do some of it in-house, save some money, and looking at construction for that this fall, I mean, the spring, excuse me, before, lost in the 50s. First in Bridge, likewise, we're working on the design for that sidewalk, the engineering, so we can put that out to bid, the hole in the ground to bring our sidewalk all the way up to our property line there where the sheet piling is currently on the north. And then Urban Renewal Phase Three Downtown Revitalization from Bridge down to Superior. We are putting together the construction contracts for that bid solicitation for design that, and that should be going out December, early January, with the goal of getting that design and the public process all completed in the spring and applying for some grant funding from the Department of Commerce, Community Development Block Grants for next fall for construction the following year, so those projects are moving forward in terms of downtown projects. Awesome. Next, we'll proceed with the public comment portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand it to a staff member in the back of the room. If you'd like to speak on any item included in this evening's agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. For the purposes of a general public forum, you are also welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to business in the city of Sandpoint that is not included on the agenda. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise a hand on Zoom at this time. I'd like to remind everyone, make them aware that the city does have a policy in public meeting decorum. The rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance door in summer. The rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance door in summary. I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly and disruptive, no calling out, clapping, holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning-related matter outside of an official public hearing. Public comment time is for comment only, no questions or debate. You're welcome to contact me or council members during my regular business hours or council's, uh, availability if you have questions or concern about city business. Again, this is your opportunity to speak on any item on the agenda or on any item of general nature relevant to the business of the city of Sandpoint. This is the only public comment time that will be offered this evening. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name, whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public comment time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tish Lippin.
Speak regarding, good, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, regarding.
Are, do you live in the city, city limits?
Yeah, I do. I'm a city resident, I'm sorry, of Sandpoint for over 20 years. Um, I guess my question is, can I speak to item six on the agenda?
Any item on the agenda here.
Okay, great. So, um, I read through the proposal that's being, um, presented to you tonight regarding the, the waiver of the fee to the Russell Center for city of Sandpoint staff members. And, um, while the, the facility is amazing, I walked through it more than once. I'm a STA Vice President and I'm an, uh, active tennis player in the community and travel to play in tournaments throughout the Northwest. Um, I just don't quite understand why the city employees would have a privilege that city residents wouldn't have in terms of not paying that annual membership fee and having reduced court fees. We, um, I understand that wellness and fitness and stress release is something that we all need. Um, but I'm, I'm just having a difficult time understanding the, um, reason behind that. And not to mention the fact that this is a self-sustaining, uh, facility that relies on user fees to keep it operating. And if 116 city employees are given a free membership and they all reside in the city of Sandpoint, that's $400 per employee, which amounts to $46,000 on the low end. Um, that's user fees that were, that the facility is not receiving, not to mention the court fees that they would be, uh, that would be reduced because of their city employment. Um, that's about 20% of the budget to keep that facility in operation, which is $250,000 from what I've read. So that just seems like a lot of money if all city employees take part in that program that is, that is lost. Uh, so I just would like for the city council to give this critical consideration before your approval tonight. Um, and just think of the precedent that this might establish if this gets approved. And I just ask for your careful consideration.
Thanks, Tish. I would, um, encourage you to, uh, stick around or at least follow up on Zoom and hear, uh, the presentation that I'm going to make on that.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for coming out.
Rebecca Holland.
Good. Oh, look at that. Holy cow. She's here. Good evening, Ms. Holland.
In the reel.
Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor Jeremy, and hello again to council. Uh, I'm back. And as you know, following a forced timeout that was pushed on me by the previous mayor and city administrator.
Holland, just, uh, for the record, um, are you a city resident?
No.
Thank you.
I'm a longtime resident in Sully Valley and a city business owner, but now retired. Um, as I was saying, is my time still moving along? Okay. Um, as you know, following a forced timeout that was pushed on me by the previous mayor and city administrator following our community's protest against the location choice for the Russell facility. I will tell you that I chose not to fight the restrictions imposed on me in court. Why? Because it goes against my grain to waste my money and tax mayor's money, many of whom are friends and family, on a lawsuit for lawyers. But be certain, there is work to be done on this poorly created ordinance. This should never happen again to anyone who uses their time and energy to survey residents about a contentious issue that directly affects as many as this one has at Trevor's Park. Please don't forget the well over 300 local park visitors signed my petition against the location and another 1,200 signed the online version once Molly and I chained ourselves in protest to the beautiful 30-year-old healthy tree we named Alice Willow. Now that I can enter city hall again, I look forward to clearing my name and the related problems associated with making this peace deal. I need to see movement on this, hopefully this week. Tonight, for the record, I wish to state, I, I never at any time assaulted anyone. I never directly threatened anyone with harm. I never attended council to throw my shoes or to cuss or to flip using off my finger. I have never lied to the police. That I will not say is the same for others. And lastly, on your agenda is an action item to give city employees a free membership to the Russell facility while asking city residents to pay a hundred and uh, dollars a year plus fees for the same. In this proposal before you, salaried city staff making over a hundred thousand would receive this perk in addition to their already hefty benefit package. You can be darn certain locals will not be liking, learning that the people who pushed this project are setting themselves up to benefit. All the while, it remains unforeseen what the actual cost of overhead and maintenance will be for this unconventional structure. Although I'm, I'm hearing now it's 200,000. I think it is worthy, but I do think it is worthy of council's consideration. Um, is the extended usage, usage for our police and fire personnel. Their optimum strength coupled with odd work schedules gives valid reason for the community to provide them with unlimited usage. As for the rest of it, please don't pass this poor proposal. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Whoops, little over three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Holland, for your comments and coming out tonight.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have signed up to speak. Give you a public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That will conclude the public, public comment portion of this evening's meeting. Uh, moving on to the consent calendar, we'll now proceed with consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is 383,727 dollars and 85 cents for regular, regular payables. Counsel, are there any questions or items you wish to remove from the consent counter?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
If Eric Bush is online, I would love to pull off four. I have some questions about the contract.
Yeah, you just, you just, um, mentioned that you'd like to, um, pull number four from the consent.
Number four.
Okay. Excellent. Um, no vote required for council to remove an item from consent. Um, so number four is removed. Uh, any other, uh, questions or items any council members wish to remove from consent counter? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent counter with item four moved to the end of, uh, new business.
So moved.
I moved by Dick, second by Spiro. It's a real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on to new business with no old business on the agenda, we'll move on to the new business. Um, the first item is a presentation or a, um, discussion of a pilot program. Moving city work schedule to a four-day-a-week, 10-day, 10-hour day schedule for city employees. Um, in consideration of the waiver of membership fee for the new James E. Russell Sports Center as a new benefit for city employees. So, um, I guess the first one, um, uh, let's tackle that first, which is going to be five. Uh, council members, uh, in the packet, you received a memo from me. As you're, and these two are a little bit interrelated. As you're aware, um, it's, um, difficult to, uh, attract employees and retain employees in an environment where our housing costs, uh, far exceed, um, you know, national averages, state averages. And of course, we're constrained financially by what we can do, even though we do have some benchmarking for these, um, you know, salaries and roles, uh, we benchmark to other communities of our size with other services. Um, frankly, even though Rathrum or maybe some other smaller town, um, Idaho, Blackfoot, for example, might be a similar size, they don't deal with the same cost of living and housing issues that we have here. So it's pretty difficult, uh, at times as we've experienced to retain and attract, uh, employees. So this is looking at our tight budget, uh, just like the next item. Uh, we have to look at what can we do, um, you know, creatively that doesn't cost us dollars out of hand that can help with those efforts. Um, so for the 410, uh, if you're not familiar, this is something that, uh, many school districts and towns across the country have implemented. Um, it has its pros and cons. Um, certainly, um, you know, you can look at this many ways, which is why I want to try this as a pilot. For six months at city hall, we've been tracking, uh, foot traffic on Fridays, uh, into city hall. And, uh, it's, uh, much lower than Monday through Thursday. Uh, sometimes it's as low as, you know, 15 people will come into city hall all day. Um, we've moved a lot of our, uh, bill payment, uh, application submission and related, um, interactions with city hall to, uh, online. And, um, in general, the trade-offs of this would be extended hours. If we close Friday, we would have extended hours Monday through Thursday. Um, we have heard from many, um, users of city hall, the public and businesses, contractors, that it's sometimes difficult to get here if they're working, you know, morning to five. So under this pilot project, we would extend those hours, uh, or opening earlier, closing later in the day. Um, and of course, department heads, uh, because they are salaried employees, um, don't have restriction on their hours. So they're going to work all the time. We would have some exceptions, obviously, for building inspections. Um, we would have exceptions for, you know, emergency and special meetings that we need to just do business on a Friday. Um, I think a lot of, um, staff members would probably, uh, especially department head salaried people would use this time to come in and have a sort of quieter data, knock out some of the long list of projects and task. Bonner County uses a sort of blended version of this, uh, in some of their departments where, uh, they close their departments to the public for periods, hours during the week. Um, but, um, in general, when you look at this, we have several portions of the city, such as the street, water, sewer crews, who are already working a 410, our IT, um, has a blended schedule like that. So, um, in visiting with legal, this, um, falls under sort of the administrative activities of mayor, um, to administer this staff, but I do want to, um, open this up for comments, thoughts, suggestions, uh, concerns that you might have with this, um, pilot project being implemented. Um, and with that, uh, I turn it over to you for any feedback you can give me.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just have one comment that when we do these things, I wish the public had a chance to answer, to answer about it or to be questioned about it, just because it is a service to them. And I just, I don't know who would be inconvenienced by not being able to do their business on Friday. I do know that, um, school districts, the schools get out early on Friday and the parapro staff has the afternoon off. The regular staff does not. And I'm just wondering, you know, maybe if they plan on paying bills or coming to the city. So I think this is a great, when I was a five-day-a-weeker, I would have loved this. I understand it. I just wish we, before we do things like this, we give the public a chance to comment.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Duquette. I, um, I certainly like public comments, especially from standpoint residents. Um, uh, one of the things I would just point out that this is non-published on the agenda and this is our twice-a-month public meeting for discussing these things. So, um, I don't know if, I didn't hear any public comment and we haven't received, I don't believe any public comment on it. Um, and it is a pilot project, so, um, if we, certainly if we get a bunch of public, um, pushback or complaints, um, I'll be the first to revert. Um, but thank you for those comments.
Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Duquette, just so I can understand, are you talking about a workshop or somebody being able to come and speak their mind?
Just come in.
And, and like they could tonight?
Right.
Okay.
If I may add another comment.
Um, yeah, go ahead there.
Just that, um, not very many, uh, unfortunately, not very many people look on Friday night to see the agenda. Um, which is sad because I would love to have more people be involved. But like perhaps at city hall, when you were thinking of this, people that come in informally ask, you know, or just have a little note that we're thinking of a four-day work week. What are your thoughts? Would it inconvenience you? That's all.
Yeah.
No big deal, just questions, because you did a, um, a non, you did a survey, but a non.
Yeah, we've just been tracking foot traffic. Yeah. Yep.
That's all.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead, Council.
I just have a comment about, um, it being a pilot program. I'm pleased with your approach on that. And another suggestion I had, um, would be one I experienced for 10 hours. Um, in the medical profession, you still have to cover all seven days. So, um, one of the things that I didn't think I would find beneficial, but I did find beneficial is that my end, day ended up being Wednesdays, that I didn't have to go to work. So I worked for two days and I had a whole business day to do everything. And then I could spend the entire weekend with family or doing other things. So, um, potentially, um, options to shift people's 10-hour days throughout the week and not just closing down city hall on Friday if that, um, seems to become problematic.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Rule. That, those are great suggestions. I know, um, Cheryl is working with staff, uh, and HR, looking at a, a, a variety of different, um, ways this program could, um, be implemented. Um, and, uh, that, that's certainly, uh, there is the overlap, right? So, um, uh, as, as of now, we're, we're thinking of moving forward with the Friday closure. Um, but, um, I'll certainly keep that in mind if, if we get feedback or it looks like there's alternative ways to implement it.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Um, so just a couple of quick comments. Um, I, I struggle with the pilot. Um, six months down the road, your staff is going to love it. I already know that. Um, and if the public says, well, we don't like it, you're going to be in a very difficult situation. And so I, I, uh, concur with Counselor Duquette as well. I, it feels like we're rushing this a little bit. I would love for city hall, for every visitor to have that informal survey saying, okay, if we close down only four days a week, how's it going to impact you? Cause again, I, I get what you're trying to do with your employees. I commend you for that. But we ultimately have to remember we're a service organization to the public. And that'll be front and center and foremost in any of our decisions. And the fact that we don't have that, that information, um, feels again to me that we're a little bit rushed. I think we could slow it down, take a month, collect that additional input, come back and have a much more informed decision than we have tonight.
Thank you very much, Councilman Howard. Um, I will take that under, uh, consideration. I think that's a good suggestion. Uh, we could potentially survey users of city hall. One of the challenges, uh, when we were thinking about splitting the week was there are some events and meetings that you need somebody from building, planning, engineering, all there. So we, we do need to make sure we have coverage on the day we're open. Um, but, uh, thank you for those comments. Again, I, um, sincerely want to take all these comments into consideration here. They're helpful.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Um, in addition to echoing everything that's already been said, I agree with, but, um, just to clarify, so we are currently open eight to five, Monday through Friday. And if I remember the packet, it said 7:30 to 5:30. So we're taking away eight, nine hours and only adding four?
Generally, yes, yeah.
Okay. Is there a reason why we can't be open 10?
Well, well, once you throw. Well, well, once you throw in the, um, the work hours and the lunch breaks, um, it's so seven-thirty till five-thirty is going to be nine hours. Giving staff time to wrap up everything else, get work done. It's just seemed like hours that would work well for the public, and give staff time to complete other tasks during the day.
Okay, so currently we, we staff nine hours even though people are only working eight because of their hour lunch break, I think, yeah.
That's, is that, that's correct, right, Cheryl? Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Should know that.
So there won't be any sort of, um, payroll benefit out of this?
Payroll benefit? You know, it does impact holidays when they fall on a Friday, um, some associated things like that, but, um, no direct payroll benefits that I've been apprised of yet.
Right, okay.
And this was brought forward, um, you know, talking to staff about, we did an internal survey, what can the city do to enhance, um, you know, the work environment here? And this was an idea that was thrown out and supported by staff, um, across, you know, from top to bottom.
Sure, yeah, and I think if you're thinking about it from the point of view of staff, I think it's a great idea, and I think it would increase their quality of life a lot. Thinking about it as was just mentioned that we are also providing a service to the public, is that extra half an hour worth losing an extra day? And so perhaps, um, you know, thinking about my own behavior, I think being open eight to six might be more beneficial than seven-thirty to five, or seven-thirty to five-thirty. Simply because if you get off work at five and you have to pick up the kids or something, you know, or you might not be here by five-thirty anyway. So you lose Fridays and you still can't make it here by the time we close. So that's something to consider.
Yeah, for sure, and, and, uh, my personal experience, my, my private business, I used to be a frequent user of City Hall and understand that sometimes you want to come in on a Friday because you got your permit ready to submit, but we do have a lot of online, um, interactions and capabilities that would remain open. Bill-paying permits. So, no, I appreciate that, and I just want to echo, uh, to Councilman Howard. Yes, pilot project, I, I hear you there. Campbell's nose is under the tent and like a temporary occupancy permit for a building. Uh, how do you evict someone after you've allowed them in there? So, um, any other council thoughts on this? I will keep you updated and we'll get back with staff and digest some of this before we take any actions. Thank you so much. The next item, uh, is a resolution to approve the waiving the membership fee to the James E. Russell Sports Center for city employees. So getting into this, I asked Director Welker to, um, this is all part of, uh, what can we do at the city to, um, address, uh, the challenges of trying to retain and attract employees? You know, as, as the council's familiar and aware, we have, um, competitive wages, but, uh, you throw that into the cost of living in the area, and it's difficult as an employer to, uh, attract and fill positions. I can tell you, um, I would need more fingers and toes than I have that, uh, employees are interested and they look and, um, or potential employees, and then they say, sorry, no thanks, I can't, can't make it work on that salary. So this is a, um, uh, revenue neutral to the city's budget, um, in terms of what we pay as an employee benefit. We would not be paying our employees. Some cities give employees health and wellness benefits and give them, you know, fifty bucks or a hundred bucks a month to go and get a health club membership. This came up as, uh, it's a city-owned facility. We have, uh, the opportunity here to do something that's revenue neutral in terms of our direct outlays of the, the budget. This year with the health insurance, uh, our city employees took a pretty substantial hit on their contribution to health insurance, um, their contribution to that. And, um, in general, um, this seems like a, a pretty, uh, no-brainer, uh, way to offer, uh, enhance our, our, um, our benefits at the city. I don't expect, um, fifty percent, I'd be surprised if fifty percent, I know most of the employees, uh, I could personally tell you, we don't have a lot of tennis players or I've heard a couple maybe play pickleball. This is, uh, something I don't expect to be, um, you know, saturating the, the utilization of the facility. And then I just want to point out that, you know, uh, this is just for the employees, not for their, uh, family members. Kids, of course, are free, uh, per the council direction. And we do have to have some level of, um, balance across our employee classification, um, fire and police, need to be treated like other people and other employees at different grades and levels. So, um, again, open this up for your discussion and, uh, answer any questions, but this generally seems like, uh, a great way to utilize, um, a city-owned facility, just like our basketball courts or other facilities, um, for the benefit of our employees and as an employer to attract and retain, uh, employees.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
A couple of things, that last comment you said, I, I am thankful we're able to use the basketball courts and volleyball courts, but, I mean, the citizens also don't have to pay for those facilities. To kind of think about the last item we talked about, was there a survey done to see which employees, how many employees would benefit?
No.
From that?
No.
Okay, and, uh, I thought I had just now was, since we're having a conversation, was maybe, uh, instead of offering that free, only a select few who would use it, maybe offering twenty-five-dollar, it would cost the city, but if we're, we're looking for something like that, twenty-five dollars where they could use it to a gym membership or this membership, rather than just a select few for free.
Yeah.
Thinking out loud.
Yeah. Twenty-five a month.
Or something.
Yeah.
Because you said as a revenue neutral, but as we heard, uh, it's still, you know, revenue loss that we could, could have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really see it as a revenue loss. My intent and, uh, the intent of this facility is that it, it's, uh, you know, the county residents who are going to use it. And I acknowledge that there are many county residents and other city residents who have supported and volunteered for, to make this a reality. But this, this facility is a city of standpoint facility, and, um, it's going to run, um, revenue neutral, uh, based on the, um, you know, it's going to cover its operating costs based on those users who will be paying to use it. So, um, when we look at, you know, are they going to be using this regardless? I, I don't know. I think your survey idea is a, a good one. I'm, I think we could, um, table this to the next meeting, maybe. I could do a city survey in the interim to get an idea that would make you feel more comfortable. But, um, at the end of the day, even a, you know, even a ten-dollar, twenty-dollar contribution per month per employee times a hundred and six employees adds up, times twelve. And that's money that comes out of our general fund, like we, we actually have to make it and print it and print it out. So this again is just something that doesn't cost the city's budget anything, um, to open this up.
Understood.
And it's customary, you look at ski resorts, you look at golf courses, you know, there's always, uh, an employee, typically an employee, uh, discount or, uh, free pass.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
A, a little bit similar to my earlier comment on the four-by-ten. Again, I love it. I, I get exactly why you're, you're thinking this way. I think it's a great use of a city facility to offer it. Uh, I think the unknown is really how well will that center run and will the membership fees really cover the costs? So again, I, I come back, it feels a little bit early, maybe. You know, at least operate the, the facility for six months and see how we're doing, and then say, okay, gosh, now we, we see we're going to be operating in, you know, in the black, and then we could go off for this without any impact on the operations. But I, again, I, I love the way you're thinking. I'm totally with you. I understand the challenges that you have recruiting, and if there are some small benefits that we can offer, I'm all for it. But again, it feels just a bit premature to me.
Sure, appreciate that. Other council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I may, again, I wish the community was involved first. The community was involved when the fee schedule was made. I have talked to many people in the community in the past few days, and I'm not getting, um, happy answers about this. They think it's inequitable, the people I've talked to. The burden will be placed on the people that are paying the four-hundred or four-hundred-and-fifty a month to support the maintenance. The donation was not for a city facility, for the staff. It was for a community indoor facility, for the community. I, I appreciate our staff. I hope their salaries are commensurate with their experience and their expertise. I think there, a lot of their salaries are above median salary in our area, and it just doesn't seem equitable. I, I know what you're talking about, trying to get people here, but uh, I don't think, I don't think this is the right way. And I'm also concerned about how it will work. You say it's neutral. Will departments, so now it's turned into a question. Will the departments who, so let's say somebody in, um, engineering wants to do this. Will that money from that department go into the Russell operating costs? That four-hundred dollars be used for maintenance?
No, there'd be no transfer of dollars.
No, no budget transfer in that.
The facility will run and the fees will be adjusted to make sure it is running, uh, in the black. And basically, this is putting the burden on, um, the, the, the users and using our ability as a city, since we operate and run the center, um, to offset our cost, as a benefit to employees. Now, we could, we could, um, you know, like Councilman Spira mentioned, we could give every employee twenty-five bucks a month. But I'm telling you right now, the budget doesn't have the money to do that. So I'm trying to, trying to make, um, you know, um, blood out of a rock here.
And there is free time, community free time.
For standpoint residents only.
At the center.
And children. And minors.
In the staff report, it's mentioned that the hours might be extended for some staff. I'm just wondering if those, if that is wrapped into the budget for that operating costs? If, if it's open, which I think is a great idea, I understand that. Also, I'm just, those are the things I'm wondering.
Answer that one, and we'll just go through the list. So that concept is for police and fire, um, health, safety, mental. You know, can they go out there and unlock it and walk or run around it, uh, on a rainy night or snowy night? And get, get their heart rate up?
I, I think it's an awesome idea. I'm just wondering, was it in the budget then?
The filter's going to be open, it's going to be heated, so yes, there'd be some light.
Okay.
So I don't imagine it would have any impact.
Just my questions.
Yeah, yeah.
And then nothing like this is given to the teachers in the school district. I go back to the teachers. I called the hu- human resources. They don't help them get gym anywhere, and they have a hard time getting teachers. And I don't believe Schweitzer has ever, maybe they do now, I worked there twenty years, they never gave me a coupon for a gym or anything. I mean, you're talking about big industry that likes to do that sort of thing.
I think they give passes to employees.
Okay, yeah. So I guess the skiing, if you have time off, you get to ski, and that's healthy. I think the whole community should be healthy and happy, and I think the fee schedule, like I said, was set up with the public, and this was not.
Sure, and, and just to respond to the school dri- district, I, I wish, well, I know, but, um, I have no control over the school district.
You made an example of companies doing that, and I'm just saying, our teachers don't get that sort of.
Sure, I, I can't control.
Which is, you know, it's too bad, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
Do what I can do for our, our residents and our businesses and our employees.
Just making my point.
I hear you, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, are memberships open right now? Is that live?
Uh, I believe it is, and we're going to be transferring to a really cool new, um, software that's going to make it really slick on phones and any, any other way.
Do we have any idea of where we're tracking on membership, year-round membership?
I don't, we have Councilman Welker in the back who could probably give us some updates if you're interested. I mean, not Councilman, the Director Welker, sorry. I wonder how long I'll keep doing that.
I don't have the latest number on, uh, annual memberships that have been paid for at this point. Week or two ago, it was around seventeen. And the, uh, operating budget anticipates around three-hundred paying annual members. And I will say that in response to your concerns, uh, Councilman Howard, the primary cost of operating this facility is about seventy percent wages for employees. And if we don't get to even that amount of the budget, we will not operate the facility, the hours that we're anticipating to operate it. It's very simple. If the tennis and pickleball communities do not step up and buy memberships and use facility, it will not be available for tennis and pickleball. Plain and simple. It will, it will revert to a sports center. We will put turf fields down, a basketball court, and we will use this primarily for city rec program. I've got the school district offering to pay for a turf field for this facility. So this is a challenge for the community. If we can't get the uptake from users like the people here tonight, then, you know, it's a sports center, it's not a tennis and pickleball center. We do not, we are a public facility. We do not need these people to pay for their memberships. If they don't, if they choose not to, or they choose to keep their memberships down at a private club in Hayden because they get more exclusive use for that club, then the city has no problem with that. We would absolutely love to open this facility up for soccer, lacrosse, football, baseball, softball. These people are knocking at our doors right now. So just to give you some facts and figures there, seventy percent is wages. We don't need to have more than one person in this building working eight-hour shifts every day. The only reason we have to have five people to keep it open for thirteen hours is to accommodate what we hope is a large amount of tennis and pickleball users. But if that community chooses not to participate, for whatever reason, it's no skin off the city's back. We've got a world-class indoor sports center that can be used for a dozen or more different sports, and there are hundreds in our community ready to fork over lots of money to use it for that purpose.
Yeah, I, I think, well, I mean, this is a first year. We've never run a facility like this, so, um, I'm just doing some quick math. So we have six, is that correct, uh, Director Welker, six front staff people? Okay. So, um, because as I was mentioning, our personnel policy, you, you're not going to believe this, but, um, we have to treat all staff equally. So, um, for those six employees who are going to work there, for them to be able to use the actual facility that they work in, we would have to then backfill their forty-dollar-a-month membership. That'd be about three thousand dollars a year, just for the employees who work there. If you follow the personnel policy, to use the facility that they work at. I guess if they were being paid to go do a lesson, they could, but technically, they can't walk out there with a a racket and go, go play when their shift ends. So, um, yeah, this, this, that's was the genesis of this, and then it grew into, well, why don't we offer this? It's a facility we own, why don't we offer it to all employees? No, no cost to us. So, but what I, what I, um, am hearing, what I'm, you know, I'm, obviously, you get to make the decision on this resolution, but I would certainly entertain a tabling so we can, uh, bring this back at the next meeting, and we can do an internal survey to understand what is going to be the utilization. You know, if it's all hundred and six, say, I'm going to use it, you know, eight days a week. Then that's, you know, gives you another data point on this. So, um, with that, uh,
Mr. Mayor?
Other questions, comments?
I do have some questions. This might be for legal. There's, I'm wondering if there's any, um, liability concerns with having employees in a closed facility after hours? Now, obviously, we can trust our, our first responders to be there, but, you know, what happens if someone gets hurt? Or they're, they're running by themselves, they have a heart attack or something like that? Would the city be liable?
Yeah, and just to, before you answer, clarify, this is, this is just for the first, the police and the fire, whoever contemplated that. Uh, the non-hours, non-public hours.
I, I don't think that the city would be any more liable than it otherwise would, just because they're after hours.
Okay.
It was the short answer to that question.
Perfect, thank you. And is there any consideration of any other parks and rec, um, offerings being offered to this city staff, like maybe windbag marina or the recreational programs or, you know, the, the RV spots? Or is this just for the Russell facility?
This, this is. This, this is just for the Russell facility, although I have been talking to the finance chief and I did a survey for the same survey um about the four tens to the staff. And I was thinking corporate passes, you know, three thousand bucks for a corporate pass that could be shared. I know some businesses in town do that. Um, believe it or not, a lot of the employees wanted a corporate silverwood pass that they could borrow and use. It was news to me, that, that's such a popular thing, but um, so we're looking at, again, what are some really cost-effective ways to enhance uh and improve the, the, the environment here for employees that um help with retention and um attraction? And, you know, you're sitting with an employee in an interview and sure, you've got state retirement and our, our wages are benchmarked to other communities. Um, hey, by the way, you can go use our sports facility. Um, or maybe if we ever get a corporate pass for sharing around City Hall, I don't, I'm just looking for creative ways to um enhance the, the work environment here.
Sure, I can, I can appreciate that. If um, as Director Welker said, if we were to move this to a different style of of recreation center, how would that affect uh employees being able to use that? If, say, it was reserved for lacrosse, then it wouldn't be open for, say, first responders, then.
Right, yeah. So there's, there's uh, the facility has a exterior sort of, I'll call it a walking track. There are nets um and the nets can cordon off the different sections and courts. In theory, um, again, this is new for us. Yeah, three years from now, we might see a portion of the courts, um, you know, cordoned off for lacrosse, golf, you could have golf simulators in there, baseball. Uh, you know, I think we need to go into this recognizing we've never done this before and it's all based on a bunch of assumptions and we're gonna have to react based on the data and the usage. So uh, to answer your question, I would imagine you could have tennis with the nets up and maybe on the next two courts, there's lacrosse or golf or pickleball or who knows what.
Sure. I guess my question was more if, let's say, a team or a league had reserved the entire facility, how would that affect employees' ability to come on their day off or?
Yeah, um, it's a good question. Um, I, I, the intent right now is to make the facility available for pickleball and tennis. And of course, walking.
And then one last question. If we weren't able to uh backfill the entire maintenance cost through um
Revenue from.
Revenue.
Yeah, users.
That'd have to come from the general fund?
I think we would, this council would have to look long and hard at whatever the revenue would support. We compress hours. If the revenue's only, you know, thirty thousand bucks a year, we need to have someone there to open it. We compress hours and it's only open two hours a day. I, I, I don't know. We're gonna have to be reactive um based on the anticipation and the feedback we've heard from user groups. This thing's gonna be well-used and loved. Um, but we're just gonna have to, you know.
Yes, my concern with that would be a little bit of a vicious cycle where if you start reducing hours, people would have less incentive to buy a membership and then you'd have to reduce hours further. More people would cancel their memberships.
Could be. Um, I, I mean, if you follow that, if you follow that, that logic, I mean, I don't know what it looks like in the future. I mean, is it something that we put automated locks on and treat it like um the tennis courts now or something else, or just have people rent it for hours? I don't know. This is, we're, we're driving into new territory. But we've got some, Daniel of the Facility Manager is a very experienced at running this type of facility. Came up from Arizona, Surprise, Arizona, been doing this for over twenty years. He's, he's really experienced at running these facilities and managing them.
Thanks.
So um, council, um, what do you want to do with this resolution?
Right, I think table in it and considering the feedback from council would be the appropriate thing to do.
Uh, survey from staff?
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Figure out what we'd anticipate staff use of utilization at. Are you open to making a motion to table it until the next council meeting?
Make a motion to table it for the next council meeting?
Second.
A motion by Espiro, a second by Schreiber. Um, Madam Clerk, is that the right action?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, although, any discussion?
Can you have discussion on a table?
Well, it's a motion.
Motion.
Oh, great question. I don't have my Gigi.
I've been learning my Robert's rules and I'm wondering.
All right.
This is a motion, just.
It is.
Of debate on this point. And as we discussed.
Okay.
This is where we're gonna have everybody basically say their piece and.
Okay.
Yes. So uh, we'll have.
In my piece.
One, one, one debate, one comment before anyone else goes again. Um, council, any discussion or debate on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, my only comment would be, um, I would like to see that people who planned on using the facility also have some sort of way in. I know that the SDA, they have asked for, I believe, a discount on membership and they were not given one. I just, I, I think I, there's enough hard feelings in the community over this this park. Anyway, I would like if the staff is gonna be surveyed, is there any way the public, somebody like Mr. Welker could talk to the tickle, pick, the tickleball people and the tennis people? And see, you know, just what the reaction is. Is that going to make them not want to purchase a, a membership if they're being given away? I don't know, I just.
So um, can I just clarify?
Sure.
You want the public to weigh in on how we compensate employees?
If, if they are being given free membership and the rest of the community is buying a membership, yes, I guess. I guess that is what I'm thinking doesn't seem equitable to me.
And when you say community, do you mean standpoint residents or Bonner County residents?
I guess it would be standpoint residents. Except that our staff isn't all standpoint, are they? I don't know. I'm just, I just, I I like the public to have a say, the community, the residents to have a say in things we do. And I don't think they get enough. And then that causes hard feelings and then they don't trust the council and they don't trust the city and just trying to.
Yeah, I hear you.
Make everybody get along.
Any other council debate or discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if, if we were to do something, and I agree with you, Pam, um, there might be something that you'd want to put in there on city staff. I think there's some perception that the majority of city staff are making over a hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Are they reasonably paid for the same position uh according to our region? And according to other cities, uh, the challenges we've had in the last eight years in terms of how long we've been able to retain employees, uh, how long the average time is to get a, to recruit and to actually hire an employee. I, I think if we're gonna go that way and we're gonna open it up and we want to talk about equity, we might want to include some of those statistics as well.
Any other council uh debate or discussion uh who haven't spoken yet?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council President.
My comment would be that I think giving city employee benefits that are neutral is a positive. Although my second comment would be that because the Russell Center is not even formally open, that maybe this would be a more appropriate discussion, sort of pushed up against when we're discussing budget. So we know where the uh Russell Center stands and what its future path maybe looks like.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rule.
Mr. Mayor, would um, would you feel it'd be appropriate to amend my motion to not necessarily the next meeting, but the next meeting that you seem deemed appropriate?
Oh, I, I think we can do a, a city staff survey, at least give you some idea. This, this may be fifteen people. And, and all it's come back, we, we could also look at just paying these six workers their, employees their, their membership, which is gonna be, again, about three thousand bucks so they can actually walk on the courts with a paddle for the place they work. But I, I can tell you, I could use three thousand dollars in a lot of different places.
May I ask a question about that?
Can we just continue? Any other, did every council, I don't think I heard from Rick, any other council debate? Or discussion on the motion? Right, hearing none, is there a um, I guess we go to a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to table this until the next meeting to perform a uh utilization survey of city staff?
Do you like a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, sure.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
No.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
With no further, oh, we now need to go back to uh the consent item, uh, item number four. Madam Clerk, do we know if Eric is joining us virtually at this point?
Mr. Mayor, Eric is um participating as a panelist.
Excellent. Uh, can you light him up and Councilwoman Duquette, I turn the floor over to you for your uh questions or comments on item four.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Eric is on. He's just, he's on for audio. He just doesn't have video, but he is listening.
Right.
Hi, Eric.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Uh, having some technical issues. I am in Boise in a hotel room waiting for um tomorrow's uh ILRCC meeting that I um mentioned to you last council meeting. Um, that, that is with Idaho Department of Lands. Um, and apologies, Pam. I'm uh here to answer any questions you have.
And, and these are just quick questions. Um, first off, I'm, I'm happy that you got this grant. Um, you know, I'm a tree hugger. I was wondering on um Appendix A, an inventory specialist, who is, these are just general curiosity questions. Who is the inventory specialist? They had to have some credentials.
Um, I believe that is referencing um the tree plotter tree inventory um that is managed by um ultimately Idaho Department of Land and the USDA. Um, and that, that is um updating our tree inventory to um, you know, have a clearer picture of what we have with respect to tree resources in the city right now. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm not quite following. Can you give me a little bit more?
Well, I don't, I don't have that pulled up in front of me, the packet, um, the contract. It just said that an inventory specialist would be doing that data collection and I was just curious to know who we have that's trained to do that. If that's something you can find out later, that's fine. You can let me know when you get back in town. Um, and so the data collection is that online, that IDL site? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct. And uh, as far as, um, I think what, what you're asking is, is who will actually be collecting the data, meaning the inventory specialist? And that, that will be um likely a team of folks. Um, uh, it's possible that we might engage volunteers to help us with that, that would go through, you know, a training process to make sure, you know, we were um uh inventorying and grading um things, you know, apples to apples throughout town.
Okay.
And, and it will also um kind of be under the supervision of, um, you know, ultimately IDL and the, the tree plotter inventory folks who we will be hiring as a part of this this grant award and this tree inventory update. Uh, and it won't be i- a um, a um, I, I, for lack of a better term, fly-by-night uh tree inventory. It will be very um specific and structured to make sure we're getting the best data possible.
Okay, it, it did sound like there was some special um requirements for that. And then what is, what's the signage and the risk assessment on the expenditures on that?
Uh, the, the signage is with respect to um, ultimately, this is a USDA program, United States Department of Agriculture, who then disperses funds to state agencies to distribute, um, which is where Idaho Department of Lands comes in. Um, so that, eh, eh, the uh sign, signage with respect to this program means we will install signage um at a location to be determined in town that says we have received funding from the United States Department of Agriculture via Idaho, via Idaho Department of Lands. Um, and, and that's really all it means. Um, you've probably seen, you know, in various states, a, a highway project funded by um, you know, the Federal Department of Transportation. This would be very similar to that.
Okay, I just saw that that was one of the costs in the contract that was being paid. And so who's, who's doing the work on the maintenance and removal? And because you've already got costs in there. I just wondered.
That, that, the costs were a requirement of our grant application to um develop that, that kind of cost estimate as to how we're gonna utilize the funds. Um, as far as a contractor or uh, you know, a company that has not been determined yet, um, it will likely be a combination of um, you know, private contractors that we will hire mixed with um city staff, um myself and, and perhaps others, um, and uh perhaps volunteers and, and the like. It, it'll be um, you know, kind of an all-hands-on-deck type, type of situation to get the most, you know, the most benefit for, for the dollars where we were awarded.
Okay, and then um, I guess I, without asking you more questions, are you gonna keep us up to date on? But I just want to know what's going on because I think it's a great grant and I said, I'm a tree person.
I, I will certainly be keeping you up to date. Um, as we, as we get our tree commission seated, we have our um first tree commission um meeting scheduled for early December. Um, and we will um, of course, be engaging them throughout this process and um we will be providing updates to council as well. And if you would like uh updates, um, you know, in addition to the ones I will provide, um please let me know and I, I'm happy to provide updates at whatever timeframe you would like.
Okay, thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very excited that uh this is gonna be a great benefit to standpoint.
All right. Any other questions? You're all set there, Councilwoman Duquette on that item?
I am. Thank you very much for the time. Thank you.
Council members, I would entertain a motion to approve uh item number four on the consent calendar now that it's been discussed.
So. Second.
Moved by Schreiber, second by um Rule. Um, so we'll be able to call, vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
I would entertain a moment, a motion to adjourn the meeting with no further business. Second, moved by Espiro, second by Dick. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned at six fifty-eight PM.